Good morning. I'd like to welcome you to Tuesday, August 18th, County Commission meeting. Our first order of business this morning is the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag. Would you stand with me, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, in the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit.
Thank you. Commissioner Bush is with us by phone this morning. Good morning, Commissioner Bush.
Good morning, Mr. Chair.
Yes, Bill. Okay. My comments this morning, as I understand it from our Reno County Counselor that after our long discussion last Tuesday on whether the commission mandated masks for grades K through six, where we said that they had to be worn within Reno County in educational situation, I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, County Counselor, that the Attorney General of Kansas came out and said that that should be a decision, the final decision should be by the school board. Is that correct?
Essentially, that's correct, yes. That a form of home rule exists for school districts in public, it applies to public schools, to control the affairs of their particular districts. And until that opinion is reversed by, I'm not suggesting it will, but until it's overridden by a district court decision, I would recommend that this board consider that as the appropriate interpretation of the law.
Okay, thank you. Secondly, I've had some emails, and I assume other commissioners have, from parents or staff of Trinity and Holy Cross schools, wondering if their schools will receive any relief money. And my understanding that those schools are to apply, and our John Deardoff and Gary Mager will be in touch with them for applications for our next round of money that's paid to nonprofits. Is that correct?
Yes, it's part of the million dollars of grants for nonprofits and private schools.
Okay.
But they should contact you, Randy?
Gary and John, or they can contact me, and I'll get them to the right place.
So they know who to contact.
Okay, and then finally, a comment this morning is I know we have some people outside the room that want to speak to us today. I assume most of them want to speak in regard to the mask mandate that was made by the County Commission, our Resolution 2020-20, which mandated masks be worn by citizens within Reno County. We will listen and allow those people to address the commission with their comments of no more than five minutes because this is not on the agenda. At this point, I do not know that there is a feeling of a majority of the commission to reverse that. I have received information just yesterday that our medical people, and I think our health officer, we'll talk to that in a minute, Hutchison Clinic, Hutchison Medical Center, and Prairie Star, all providers support the mandated masks in Reno County, and all are on the same page with our current mask ordinance. And for that reason, I will not change my vote on that at this point in time. Commissioner Bush, do you have any desire to address the mask ordinance at this point in time?
No, I do not. You said very well, multiple health officials are in support of the mask ordinance, and they're the ones that I put in my trust in. So at this point in time, I am not willing to change the mask ordinance.
Okay, thank you. Just wanted to make sure that we didn't need to agendatize that item. Okay, at this point in time, we'll move on to item four, COVID-19 update from our interim health officer, Karen Hammer Schmidt, and our emergency manager-director, Adam Washire. Karen, would you like to start, please? And welcome to our commission meeting. I've already thanked Karen for being the interim director of our health department, and so it's nice to have Karen with us today.
Thank you, appreciate that. Just looking at Reno County numbers, we have 482 positive cases. We have recovered 263 of those. We have 218 active cases here in Reno County, and we have had one death. Of those active cases, we are also looking at the 218. We have an outbreak at Hutch Correctional Facility that has been reported. I believe yesterday, there were about 160 of those. I cannot pull them out specifically. On our dashboard, we have pulled out four different groups of clusters that we're trying to let people know that we do have clusters in the community, but not necessarily name facilities, businesses specifically. That we're still working on that. We know that in our community, that the active cases as inmates are not necessarily going to affect us as a community. However, the large amount of staff that work at Hutch Correctional Facility would be in our community. So we have separated our positive testing rate so that as schools especially are getting back to go into session, they can kind of look at that. We have 6.66 community positive testing rate, which is much better than our overall testing rate of eight point, or the positive testing of 8.5% with the inmates in there as well. So that's why we've pulled them out of that. Kansas total, we've had 34,184 positive cases. We've had 406 deaths. Oklahoma surrounding areas, 48,711 cases with 665 deaths. Missouri has 69 cases, 225. With those 1,415 have had deaths. Nebraska has 30,563 cases with 362 deaths, and Colorado had 53,351 cases and 1,896 deaths. So, the hospital has 67 patients in-house, and they have one intubated. They are still waiting to find out if that would be a positive case. They do not know. They are testing that patient, though, as a person of interest. Any other questions on that?
Yeah, Karen, just to clarify, and I'm slow sometimes on these numbers, of your 218 current cases that you're monitoring, 160 of those plus or minus are from the correctional facility. Is that...
That's what we had around there.
Okay. And at this point, our positive testing is at 6.6%, which, if I recall correctly, is going down from what it was a few weeks ago.
It looks that way. I think we're staying pretty steady. I think our numbers are low enough that that percentage is going to stay right in there.
Okay. Ron, would you have any questions? Ron Hurst?
Yeah, I was just trying to relate back to the graphs that we had last week that showed the cases and how many positive was. And so what is our percentage rate now has dropped from last week? Is that correct or not?
I would not know specifically what it was last week. I don't have that in front of me.
Okay, well, what I was getting at is, I'm trying to relate this back to the period of time that we went back to Governor's Order of 2059, that that trend last week did not show a decrease. And it showed an increase, in fact. So that's why I was relating it back to knowing what the trend was.
I would not accurately be able to answer that, so I'd rather hold off and get the correct answer before I let you know incorrect data.
That's fine, I understand that. Thank you.
Commissioner Hurst, from my notes of last week, and I would want Karen to check on this, but my notes of last week said a 5.7% positive test rate.
5.7.
And 6.6 are somewhat...
It hasn't decreased, anyway.
No.
By using mandating mask. Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Bush, do you have any questions of our interim health officer, Karen Hammer Smith?
No, I do not. And Karen, welcome aboard. Thanks for helping us out.
Thank you.
Okay. And I believe, are we expecting Dr. Scott Polly this morning? Oh, Scott's in the back of the room. You didn't knock on the door and let me know you were here. Okay, Scott, why don't you speak to us before we ask Adam to come forward?
I apologize for my tardiness. Thank you for the counsel, for allowing me to be here. And thank you for Karen, as you said, for stepping up and helping us here, as well as the entire county. I caught the tail end of what you all were discussing, and I can say that our numbers for the third through the ninth, and when I say our numbers, I refer to that population that comes to the clinic, which is primarily from Reno County, but we also get from elsewhere, the, what I kind of refer to as the area that flows to our local hospital. We actually ended up seeing a 16-point, I believe, 9% positive test rate of that population. Again, we're dealing with a symptomatic population there, so we're already self-selecting to those with symptoms. Not only did our percent positives increase, but our total number of individuals seen increased. That tells us a few things, that there is more virus in the community, just not a percentage of illness, but also overall. And that's how we'd expect viruses to work, much less like a, the fire analogy I keep going back to, fires will spread. It's nice to put a fire out, but sometimes all you can do is kind of control the rapidity with which it grows, which I think we're kind of in that scenario right now, riding the brake, per se. This previous seven-day period, I think we'll see similar numbers. I'm projecting that based on some incomplete data. We still exist in a world where we have a two-to-three-day delay, sometimes only one day. We don't necessarily advertise that because I can't guarantee everybody will get a one-day turnaround on results, but from a one-to-three-day return on results, we're looking at probably similar numbers for the 15% to 17% positive test rate. Additionally, with those numbers, I can guarantee that we're not seeing other circulating illnesses or viruses currently. Again, I'm basing on the fact that while our total number, our N has increased, additionally, our percentage has increased. If we see the introduction of another virus such as the flu, we will see our N, our number of symptomatics, increase. And by definition, the percent that are COVID-positive will decrease simply because we infused a large number of other ill, non-COVID individuals. So the percent positive test rate is only a worthwhile measure as long as we're not seeing our data watered down by other illnesses. We use other metrics in that case. I bring that up because now with school approaching, as every school year for the history of mankind, we see viral illnesses circulate. We know that through sick kids, sick teachers, sick parents. Everybody goes through the, kind of the early fall, early winter sniffles, et cetera. We haven't seen that yet, so that gives our data a period of time where it can be more easily interpreted. As the opportunity for rapid tests in the community grows, which we've rolled some out at the hospital now, they're a little more limited as far as their volume that they can use. They're kind of adherent to some regulations from the state. But as they have it, and as we grow it here, probably in the next week and a half, we will eliminate that two- or three-day delay for the majority of positives, which I think will be another feather in our cap as far as, and when I say our, I mean the whole community, a feather in our cap as far as our ability to respond quickly to slow the spread. With that onsite positive result, we can more quickly give the person their appropriate isolation recommendations as all, as well as begin contact tracing. So the 20, 30, 40, 100 people that person's been around, we can more quickly notify them and hopefully give them the appropriate quarantine recommendations at that time. So some good signs, good options on the horizon. Again, we're staring down the barrel of the start of school. We are going to be putting a large number of young people or older adolescents in a scenario of mass gathering, which we've been eliminating the past few months. The school boards are actively meeting in our county to think about how to mitigate as many risk factors as they can. That would be masks. That would be affecting and changing periods of movement within the hallways to avoid too many people coming in contact with each other. I think we need to have all those things up in advance to make the school year successful. It's not a matter of if the infection will be in our schools, it'll be when, and then how quickly we can respond, contact, trace, and isolate to eliminate as many of those effects as possible because the downstream effects are immense. Kids out of school require largely parents at home, which means parents out of work, which means employers without employees. If we can effectively mitigate and react and keep school in session, it benefits our county both on an individual level but economic level. So rest assured that we're trying to do the best we can. I appreciate every individual for doing their part, social distancing, mask-wearing. This mask is good enough when I put up drywall. It's protected my lungs every time I've ever done it. If it's good enough for drywall, it's good enough for a virus. For those out there that don't think it helps, think practically. I'm typically a rather diplomatic person. I'm too tired to be diplomatic anymore. The mask works. The data shows it works. For those who don't think it works, think again. And I'll largely leave it at that.
Okay, Doctor, the symptoms that you're going to see with students returning to school, is that normally a fever?
So you were speaking of the normal kind of fall...
The younger people, the symptoms that they might...
Most commonly, we see the classic upper respiratory stuff, runny noses, watery eyes, coughing. And with the much younger ones, any elementary school teacher will tell you, they use their sleeve, not a Kleenex. They don't cover their nose. They don't cover their mouth. I would argue that our elementary school teachers probably have the strongest immune systems, simply because they've been exposed to everything. Those symptoms we also see with COVID. So the waters are a little bit muddied there, not just from a diagnostic standpoint, but also, again, it muddies the waters as far as interpreting our data. We'd be careful interpreting data later when we infuse those illnesses. The positive test rate won't be the only thing we rely on.
Okay, and as I understand, your conversations to Reno County and so forth have been in consultation with the health officer at the Hutchison Hospital and also the Prairie Star.
Yes, sir.
And so as you communicate the value of masks to us, you're sharing their opinions also?
I would say my thoughts are consistent with those thoughts that they voiced. I don't want to speak directly for them.
I understand. I understand. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Hurst?
Just to clarify things, your percentages that you show, the 16 points, are those that come in to the clinic as already having some type of system, right?
Those would, those numbers exclude any asymptomatic testing. And that's, that might be why the numbers I give you won't be consistent with, say, what the county or state gets. They don't have the, I shouldn't say the ability. It would be an extraordinary task and require an extraordinary number of people and hours to separate those numbers.
And that's what I was getting at, is the jurors, was they come in with symptoms already...
So I'm not saying that 16% of our population has it.
Right. And versus the counties, which is their overall testing of the county, correct?
Yeah, I'm pulling out the asymptomatic people that we tested, whether it's, we largely don't test asymptomatic people except for certain situations.
Right.
Due to illness or a person's irreplaceability as a medical provider. Those are things we take into context.
So basically, the percentage rate is staying right in that 16%, like it was last week?
Well, we had a, I have to look back, we had a dip for a brief week down to almost 8%. And we're looking at a seven-day timeframe. So again, when you spread out that duration, any aberrancy in a two- or three-day period might be reflected in that percentage. But we've kind of carried from a 7%, 8% back up to a 14% to 17% positive test rate. But granted, it's a, it's that percentage of a greater volume.
And also, that 8% occurred back in July, if I remember right.
That's right. Yep.
Prior to the mask mandate.
Okay. Commissioner Bush, do you have any questions of Dr. Polly?
No, I don't. Thank you. You did an excellent job.
Thank you. I'd mention one last thing. There are metrics out there, goal metrics set by the state, and, you know, those involved at the state level with education, as far as what it requires to have a school open and to stay open. Those are really strong recommendations as opposed to orders. So when it comes to things like masks, that I know there's some disagreement on, whether it's political or not, I don't know. My thought is, let's do our best to keep the schools open. Because if we don't, and the schools close, which we've seen in many other states, it's going to be a shoulda, woulda, coulda scenario. And this mask I'm wearing is a small piece of fabric, and it's much less costly than parents not being able to be at work because their kids are home, or kids missing out on learning directly from their educators. So just, those are more interjection of my thoughts and opinions.
What you say, probably the most important fact is that telelearning is not near as beneficial to the student as being at school. Because of those six hours sitting in front of a computer.
As a former male adolescent, I would, I would not be in my job if you had me do telelearning. It would be, it was advantageous for me to have wonderful educators in this community, and I would hate for our young people to miss out on that.
I'd agree.
Thank you.
Thank you for those remarks, Dr. Polly, and we appreciate you being here, giving us insight from the health community. Adam, your comments today, your update?
Good morning, Commissioners. Adam Washire, Reno County Emergency Management Director. This is day 171 of COVID. That started all the way back on March 1st. I did want to clarify one thing, based off some new information we received just momentarily ago. The Hutchison Correctional Facility numbers, the estimate is 148, not 160. And I want to emphasize that that is an estimate at this time. Those aren't hard numbers. And Reno County wants to continue to work closely with HCF for any sort of press release or any sort of hard numbers before those numbers go in front of the media. Way back on March 19th, the Board of County Commissioners declared a public health emergency, and that was extended until December 31st of 2020. We are 104 counties that have an active disaster declaration. Chautauqua County has still not declared. And then we are one of 103 counties that still have active cases. Wallace and Rollins Counties are the two counties that are still holding out and do not have cases yet. The Governor's Disaster Declaration is set to expire on September 15th. Obviously, that's subject to change, but that also plays into the mask mandate in Reno County. The Board, since we have adopted that 2052, or not necessarily adopted, but we fall under that 2052, that's what mandates masks in Reno County. That expires the same time her disaster declaration expires. The Kansas Legislative Special Committee on Kansas Emergency Management Act is holding a special hearing on August 24th through the 26th. So that might also play into the Governor's Disaster Declaration. The agenda's still pending at that time, but I think we'll get some information from there. KDHE is reporting 35,167 cases from 103 counties with 405 deaths reported. They also report 13 additional outbreaks since last Thursday. Of those outbreaks, there's 143 outbreaks total through the state of Kansas with 3,652 cases, 179 hospitalizations, and 52 deaths. I won't break out the active outbreaks, but I will say there's eight corrections outbreaks, 46 from long-term care, and then nine from meatpacking industries. The travel and exposure guidelines, I get a lot of questions about that. That changed last week after we spoke. There's no longer any U.S. states on that quarantine list, but they are requiring someone, if they attend a mass gathering, of 500 more people outside the state of Kansas to quarantine when they get back. So for example, if you went to Sturgis and you return, you're probably going to have to quarantine for those 14 days. We've also been hearing a lot of information on Secretary Lee Norman's graph that he posted. The data accuracy was questioned. I would like to refer everyone to the Kansas City Star article that was posted on August 16th, 2020. They did their own study with them and the Wichita Eagle, and they were able to broadly confirm Norman's data. It shows a downward trend since last month with the 16 counties that have mask mandates in order, and the 89 counties who did not were trending up. Kansas seven-day rolling average of new cases peaked at 486 on July 17th. It fell to 383 on August 1st, a drop of more than 100 cases. So again, I know that, I've heard a lot of information on that. I believe the commission has too. So I'd encourage you to go out and read that Kansas City Star article. There's some good information in there. On a PPE front, we're in pretty good shape right now. Still, the real issue is getting the nitrile gloves. We've been having a lot of issues finding those. And then N95 masks, we're okay with N95 masks in the county right now, but it's still an issue purchasing those. We ordered, or we are going to order approximately 500,000 three-ply masks this week. They should arrive in the county in somewhere between 30 and 45 days, but we still have enough three-ply masks to get us through that time. That's all I have for an update for you this morning. Do you have any questions for me?
Are there questions of the other Commissioners of our Emergency Management Director?
I have none.
I don't have any.
Adam, would you make that article that you referenced available to the county administrator so he could forward that to us, please?
Yes, sir. I'll forward it to you as soon as, as soon as this meeting's over.
Thank you. Thank you for being here. Okay, at this point in time, we'll allow public comments from the public on items not on the agenda?
Could I have, before you do that, could I have two minutes to clarify something?
Yes, clarification.
Joel Sullivan, County Counselor. I want to make reference to comments earlier about the mandate and presence, presently in effect in Reno County, the masks be worn. It is true that there is such a mandate, but it's not the mandate of the Reno County Commission. It's the mandate of the Governor of the State of Kansas by virtue of Order 2052. So what, briefly, the scenario as to what happened was, on July 2, that governor issued 2052, but on the same date, you issued our Resolution 2017, which indicated that mask-wearing was not mandated. So you took that position by virtue of an order on July 2. On July 14, by virtue of Resolution 20 hyphen 20, you rescinded your order of July 2. And that means that Reno County has no mandate or order in effect with respect to mask-wearing. The effect of your order on July 14, rescinding the early order, was to leave the Governor's order in place. So if anybody was to advocate a change for you, it would be the reinstatement in effect of your order of July 2, which meant, which stated that mask-wearing in Kansas was not, in Reno County, was not mandated. And so if somebody asks you to go forward, that would be the, and you decide to do something, that would be the action you'd take.
So masks are not mandated by Reno County. They're mandated by government, the Governor order?
Yes, sir.
Okay. A thin, thin area there, but I think it's good that you pointed that out, Joe. Okay, at this point in time, we'll take comments from anybody on items not on the agenda today. They need to come to the podium, state their name and address, and they have five minutes for your individual comments. Good morning. Thank you. Ma'am, please state your name and address and limit your comments to not more than five minutes, please.
Good morning. I'm Dr. Dawn Varney, a physician and medical researcher at 34 East 27th Avenue in Hutchinson. First, I'd like to revisit the KDHE Director's graph, which I presented to you last Tuesday. This graph, after a freedom of information required... last Tuesday. This graph, after a freedom of information request, additional data were obtained covering the dates which led up to the beginning of Dr. Norman's chart. Both graphs are shown here at the exact same scale for comparison. These newly released data shown in the top figure clearly show that he chose the maximum height of cases in order to manipulate the graph. The mask mandate went into effect July 3, naturally COVID cases increased significantly in those counties that followed the mandate as compared to only a slight increase in the counties which did not. I can't help but wonder why it took a FOIA request to get these additional data, which we only got last week. Again, it's my strong opinion that this was fear mongering as psyops, not science. In all of history, I can only find four scientific studies done regarding cloth masks. Three of those looked at the 1918 influenza pandemic, and one recent study in 2015 looking at the effectiveness of surgical versus cloth and mask. The most comprehensive of these 100-year-old studies, influenza effective control measures in the flu pandemic is offered as Exhibit 1 in your packets. In the graphs, there are six cities in the two graphs that are listed, Boston, Buffalo, San Francisco, Washington, Stockton. And Boston, they all show that the cities in the pandemic of the influenza in 1918 all had the exact same outcome as far as case incidents and deaths, whether these cities used masks or not. The two California cities of Stockton and San Francisco were masked and all of these other cities were not. Exhibit 2, the 2015 prospective study with over 1,600 participants in Australia and New Zealand cautioned against the use of cloth masks, saying the rates of infection outcome were highest in the cloth mask arm compared with the medical mask arm. Penetration of cloth masks by particles was almost 97%. Adverse events were 40 to 42% when wearing masks. In the present COVID pandemic, worldwide data has shown in all the following graphs indicating whether the country has universal mask usage, the date of mask mandate, or no masking at all are now revealing that 100 years later, masks still don't work. Japan and Hong Kong have both had universal mask usage, yet both are seeing more cases than ever. India, also with universal masking, is seeing ever rising cases. These graphs have a sampling of countries mandating masks show that the data of the mandate indicating the vertical, indicated by the vertical line. For now, direct your attention to the upper graph of each of these following charts. All of these mask countries, France, Mexico, Egypt, Spain, Israel, even Ghana, where Africa, where my husband is from, are having more cases, more cases of COVID, not fewer. Likewise, Reno County order has been in place for five weeks, and our cases are rising, just as in the prison where masks are being worn 24 hours a day. But in unmasked countries, it almost seems as though coronavirus has about run its course. New Zealand has almost no new cases, and Sweden's cases are clearly dropping. These countries did not lock down or wear masks. In fact, it seems as though they have weathered the worst of COVID, and as ultimately happened in the Spanish Flu pandemic, in these countries, probably the people who are going to get sick have gotten sick. Now, if you look at the bottom graph of each of the above WHO charts, overall, in most places, the death rate is falling and mostly staying down across the world as we learn how to more effectively treat this disease despite the recent increases in the number of cases. Yet, in the United States, in the most severely locked-down places in the country, cases are surging. Hawaii, with the strictest mask and quarantine requirements in the country, even when adjusting for slightly less testing and for reduced social interaction, as shown by the yellow line, now has skyrocketing cases. Exhibit 3 relates how both masks plus solitary quarantine failed to stop an outbreak at Fort Benning, Georgia in May. 640 new recruits were immediately tested for COVID-19, four tested positive and were removed from the group, while the remaining soldiers were placed in isolation for 14 days, after which they all tested negative. Yet, just eight days later, after one recruit exhibited symptoms, 142 of them tested positive. That's 22% of the entire group. Also impacting the U.S. military this ring was an outbreak on the aircraft carrier USS Theodore Roosevelt, where the sailors were not wearing masks. 24 of them tested positive. So the soldiers at Fort Benning who wore masks had virtually the same infection rate, 22%, as the sailors who were not wearing masks, 24%. The science shows that masks don't stop a pandemic. They just make us feel like we're doing something to be in control. Before making your decision today, I ask that you read the important information in the white paper presented last week, Science Before Policy: The Confusion Surrounding Masks. We understand that it will take courage, but we ask you to adopt a resolution rescinding the resolution of July 14, which had rescinded a prior resolution to not uphold a State of Kansas executive order of wearing the mask. Thank you.
Thank you, Don. You're very good at staying within your five minutes. Thank you very much. Next, please. That's it? Okay. Thank you, Adam, for monitoring the door there. Okay, we'll move on to Item 6 on our agenda is determine additions or revisions to the agenda. I would like to include a letter of support for Ideatech for some grants that they're asking to obtain. I think the Commissioners were given a copy of that letter. I'd like to make that business item 8B, if that's appropriate to the Commission. And then on the consent agenda, Item D is with Bob Bush not being able to be with us for the observation of the proposed vacation of the road today, which is our Resolution 2020 dash 22. Under Paragraph 2, Ron Sellers, Bob Bush, and Ron Hurst were appointed as viewers of said road. I would like to substitute Don Britton for Bob Bush, who can't be at that meeting today, and make that consent agenda item D. Those are the items that I would like to suggest. Commissioner Hurst, do you have any changes or additions?
I do not have any. I would support the addition of those two items.
Commissioner Bush, do you have any changes or additions to the agenda?
No, I do not. I'd like to thank Don for stepping in and taking my place today.
Okay, I think since there's some changes here, that we ought to ask for a motion in a second to allow those two changes to the agenda.
I saw a move.
Second.
Do we have a motion in a second? Is there any discussion? If not, please call the roll.
Mr. Bush?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, moving on. Item 7 is our consent agenda. Item A is vouchers for the amount of $1,49,824.71. Item B is approval of the minutes of the meetings for June 2020. Item C is the approval of the Community Corrections Kansas Department of Corrections Juvenile Services Reinvestment Grant application. And Item D is the replacement of Commissioner Bush with Don Britton on the road viewing that will occur at 11 o'clock this morning. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'm moving.
Second.
Motion in a second. Is there any discussion of any of these items? If not, please call the roll.
Mr. Bush?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, our next item will be Item 8, Acceptance of the Nomination by the Way of Proclamation for Reno County to Become a Stepping Up Innovator County by Sheriff Darian Campbell. Was the sheriff available? You brought a crew with you.
Hey, good morning. Good morning. Darren Campbell, the Sheriff of Reno County. So this morning, I have the proclamation. The proclamation is actually an acceptance of, from NACO, the National Association of Counties, has deemed Reno County as being an innovator county for the work that they've been doing out at the facility. Let me give you a little bit of background, if I can, please. I have some folks here that could probably answer the specific questions that I know you guys will probably have. So in 2018, when the stepping up initiative began and the proclamation was signed, the United Way, headed by Lisa Gleason, was the, was our facilitating agency that helped us get the stepping up initiative began in our facility. So the initiative is to identify those with serious mental illness that are coming into our facility, which across the nation is about 75% coming into the correctional facility. And since then, across the United States, there have been 19 counties that have been deemed as an innovator county for the stuff that they're doing in this capacity. So the National Association of Counties has actually deemed us and sent us nomination and acceptance for being innovator county in some of those things that they've been doing out at the facility. So that's what this proclamation is for, is to accept that nomination as being an innovator county and being the 20th in the nation across the United States for being innovator county.
Okay, and Sheriff, by us accepting that proclamation, what does that require us as the county to do?
So we just maintain what we've been doing, which is the three steps that we've been doing out at the facility. We have a behavioral health supervisor that's actually partnered with us out at the facility in Horizons. So she monitors that and takes care of the inmates. Once they've been identified, she puts them on a program and a regimen based on how long they're in the facility and gets them treatment, gets them the proper treatment that they need. So we just maintain what we've been doing, and that keeps us as an innovator county. There are a few things that we do, such as in March, we went to a Kansas Sheriff's Association Conference up in Topeka, and myself and Audra, the behavioral health supervisor at the facility, was sat on a panel with the Sheriff's Association and helped mentor other counties to get programs started or other things. And so he was on his panel to answer questions and kind of tell how to get things started and what began and what it consists of. And then afterwards, we was still around and answered questions and, like I said, kind of mentor those other counties that are looking to get some stuff started, that don't have anything, or would like to get some things going in this capacity as well. And out of 105 counties, I think there's like 97 jails in the state of Kansas. There's only two other counties that have been identified as innovator counties in the state of Kansas.
And do you know what other county is?
That'd be Douglas and Johnson County.
Douglas and Johnson. Okay, Lisa's here. Lisa, would you like to make remarks in regard to this, please? Lisa Gleason?
Good morning. Lisa Gleason, Director for United Way of Reno County. I live at 3,800 Foxfire, and this is really quite an honor for our community, and I hope that the community sees all the efforts that we have put into trying to reduce the number of mentally ill in jail in Reno County, and how the efforts of all these people and the stepping up council have truly made a difference. Special shout out to Bob. Is he on the phone today?
Yes.
Yeah, Bob has been a part of our stepping up council, and we're so grateful to have his thoughts and wisdom at those council meetings. We'll be asking to see if one of the other Commissioners, once he leaves, will step up and be a part of our council. But it really is about collaboration and coming together to try to help our community with this daunting issue of mental health and the justice system. So we're so grateful, and because of becoming, being deemed an innovator community, we are really looked up to as kind of doing things no other counties are doing. We are, people are looking to us to learn. And so really, the only thing that will be asked of us outside of what we've normally been doing is being able to mentor other communities. And I think that's a huge honor, and I think that says a lot for who is here and all the efforts of all the stepping up council.
Okay, and Lisa, when was this started?
It was officially started in 2018. The proclamation, the county Commissioners deemed it worthy of doing that. We had actually started meeting as a stepping up council probably, I want to say, nine, would you say a year before, maybe? I would say it took us about a year to get to the point where we felt like we could ask the county Commissioners to help us with that proclamation. And so we've probably been working on it over three years, and the efforts are starting to really lift us up, and I think we're starting to see some benefit from it, finally.
Okay, can anybody here clarify the benefits that we've received through having this process done out at the facility?
I can, I can speak to, not the facility, I'm going to let them speak to the facility, but let's just talk about, so at, part of the stepping up council is that we have all these different people at the table. So we have the District Attorney Office, we have judges at the table, we have county corrections, obviously, we have our different systems within the justice system. We also have Horizons and NAMI. We have a city council member who is a part of it and county Commissioners. What has helped us do is be able to bring everybody to the table to have discussion. In front of that, all the different things, like systems have changed, we've got better data that we're collecting now. One of the things that's coming out of the city is that we are going to be having kind of coresponders, and that's not quite what Captain Hoover is saying, calling them, but where they'll have mental health people actually out on patrol or being able to help respond with HPD. So that's a result of these efforts, that we've got the collaboration even stronger with Horizons Mental Health and both county and city, I think is, says a lot. But do you want to talk about jail and Audra?
Yeah, I'd appreciate it if somebody would suggest from 2018 here, two years, by having a behavioral health coordinator, the successes that we are seeing.
Good morning. My name is Audra Goldsmith, and I'm the Behavioral Health Supervisor at the Reno County Correctional Facility. I first want to start by saying, introducing a mental health staff into the Reno County Correctional Facility has helped, like Sheriff had said, identify that SMI population that comes into the jail. I don't have the exact statistics in front of me, but it is commonly known that mental health population within side correctional facilities do end up costing more on a yearly basis than people who don't have that diagnosis. They are generally in our jails longer. They also provide additional treatment and things like that. So part of stepping up is working to reduce how long our inmates are in jail, and also getting their treatment started while they're in jail. That way, when they get out, they can continue those services and hopefully reduce the recidivism so they don't end up coming back to jail. So that's a very, one of the very big initiatives. The other part is the data collection. That stepping up really supports and pushes within our, within our committee. And we've been collecting, I presented in January to the Commissioners, our first kind of baseline data within 2019. Prior to that, we hadn't had systems available within our jail to really pull that mental health data, and so we worked really hard last year to try to come up with a program and really hard data to look at our mental health in our jails. Last year in 2019, our overall population was 33% of people who have mental illness were booked into jail. Other information that we collected was, there was an average of 23 days that a mental health person would stay in jail versus somebody who doesn't have a mental health diagnosis would only be there around an average of 12 days. So us collecting this types of information and data and statistics is helping us identify what programs and structures and policies we need within the jail to help continue reducing the recidivism and also providing treatment to our mental health that are currently there.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Sellers, I would like to ask with this, along with this, is what effort along with the mental illness does, what your- with the mental illness, does what your effort towards behavioral changes, behavioral attitude, how does that work in with the mental health aspect of it? How do you relate those?
Sure. So along with the other treatment, when I talk about treatment services within the jail, that's medication management, that's provided by Horizons Mental Health Services. We also try to implement different group therapies and psychoeducational therapies within the group to help those sort of instances, to help more of the behavior modification that's going on that definitely coincides with mental illness. Myself being there, I triage people, crisis work, different things like that to really help people transition into jail. It can be a very different environment to live in, obviously, it can be very stressful. So that's why I am there to help, help our inmates be able to cope with that anxieties and those extra depressions and heightened emotions and typically behaviors that aren't always positive that come down.
Okay, would you, either you or the Sheriff clarify, I believe you used the number of 32% had mental illnesses and the Sheriff said something about 75%
Yes.
of those coming to the jail have mental illness. Are you talking about different items?
Yes, sir. 75% nationally, that came from the stepping up data that they collect nationally in jails across the nation, 75% typically have some sort of identified mental illness. And our Reno County data we collected last year was 33.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Yes, sir.
I misunderstood what those two numbers were. Commissioner Bush, do you have any questions of the group?
Bob's off the line now.
Bob's off. Bob had told us that he had a procedure that he needed to do at some point in time this morning, so I guess they came.
Commissioner Sellers, I sat in on 2018, a Kansas Association of Counties little seminar when they were talking about the stepping up program. And since then, I know Douglas County's been in contact with Reno County on some of the things they've done and they've implemented some of the new things that you've done. We've got some other people here and if it's all right with you, Commissioner Sellers, they took time to come here, I'd like to have them introduce themselves and tell what part of the program they're involved with.
Certainly, be glad to. Some people don't like to speak though, Commissioner Hurst.
Well, somebody will.
Good morning. Captain McClay, I'm the jail administrator at the correctional facility and I've been a part of this group for, for several years now and I just, just to echo some of the things that Lisa said, it's, it's pretty amazing, the different agencies within the county, be it government agency, nonprofit agencies, all coming together and seeing the need and putting time, putting forth their time and efforts into a program like this because it really does, it really does help, especially like Lisa talked about, getting everybody around a table and talking about some of the issues. Because there's nothing more concerning to me, or one of the biggest concerns that I see is, I mean, we get people down in that jail that truly, personally, I don't think should be there. Morally, I don't think should be there. Did they commit a crime? Sure. Is there different avenues that can be approached or ran down or, or looked at? Absolutely. So what we're trying to do is to correct some of those things and I, I think it's working, we're moving in the right direction. So, thank you.
Thank you, Captain. Okay, I guess nobody else is vouchful?
I think that's. Well, I, I support the program 100% and I would like to commend Sheriff Henderson for starting this program and bringing it to light.
No, you're, you're absolutely right. Sheriff Henderson, his vision, along with everybody that they, that they partnered with, and that's why Audra and Sean, that's where the rubber meets the road down at the facility, is making this stuff happen like this. And it's, it's making it a success.
Okay, thank you, Sheriff. Very nice presentation. I'm glad to see, and I'll echo Commissioner Hurst's comments, that I'm glad that we're doing this, I'm glad that we're a leader in something like this. Certainly, mental illnesses of any nature are a terrible problem with our society that we're in and if you're doing anything at all to help that. And I do appreciate the judges and other people that, within the community, sitting down with you to come to some common grounds in regard to this program. Commissioner Hurst, would you like to make a motion to accept this nomination?
Yes, I would. I move to accept the proclamation, accept the proclamation for Declaration of Reno County to be announced as a stepping up innovation county.
I'll second that motion. Is there any further discussion? If not, please call the roll.
Mr. Hurst?
Yes.
Mr. Sellers?
Yes. Thank you all for being here.
I think we would have read it, but it's a pretty long proclamation.
It is pretty lengthy. Hey, thank you all.
The, thank you all for being here and doing what you do for citizens of Reno County. Okay, item B on this is to, to approve a letter that the county administrator has written to the Spark Task Force, and I'd like to read this letter. Dear Spark Task Force, on behalf of Reno County Board of County Commissioners, we support Idea Tech's grant application to enhance broadband service in Reno County. There are numerous areas of Reno County that have very limited broadband service, if at all. It is crucial for broadband service to be extended to these issue, areas of Reno County to allow for our residences to have access to many crucial services during COVID-19 pandemic, including such things as telehealth, telemedicine, remote work, and remote learning abilities. Idea Tech is a local company in Reno County that provides service to some areas of our county and has the ability, if granted, some money from the CARES Act. Some of the reasons why we feel, feel that Idea Tech's application for the extension of broadband service is important include the following points. The COVID-19 pandemic has amplified broadband access challenges in our county. Some areas of the county do not have a wired provider that offers sufficient speed for children to take advantage of distance learning. Three, citizens that live in the more rural areas do not have the ability right now to work at home compared with their urban counterparts. Four, citizens in the rural areas do not have adequate or any access to telehealth. Five, broadband providers will not extend services to areas as the cost to build out service is too expensive. The CARES Act money may be the only chance that these areas of Reno County will ever have to receive broadband service. Thank you for your consideration of this important grant from Idea Tech to the crucial broadband service in Reno County. And if approved, this would be signed by the three county commissioners. Is there a motion to approve this letter as written and be signed by the county commissioners?
I would move that we accept this letter of recommendation, but I have some comments later on.
Okay, I will second the motion. Open the floor for comments, please.
I realize that, and Idea Tech, as they say, is a local company here, but should, in my opinion, should any other provider of construction and installation of broadband services, that we, we also look at them as, if they're qualified, that, so we don't exactly limit it, but I, I feel strongly in having a local company. But I wonder if we, we, we should extend the opportunity to any other company that would want to be involved in this.
Well, I, I guess my comment in, in reply to what you've brought up is that we've been asked by Idea Tech to send this letter on behalf of, of asking, they're asking for a grant from the Spark Task Force. I would think that the Reno County Commission would be willing to sign a letter by any other company that is asking for grant process.
That was the only.
So I, I don't think by signing this letter, we're suggesting that we're favoring Idea Tech over somebody else, but if somebody else in the future comes to us and asks for our support, I for one would be certainly supportive of that.
That's all I was, that's, that's all I was getting at, is that I'm very much in favor of, of a local company, but I just didn't want to seem that, that we were selecting this particular company alone. So yes, I'm, I have no problem. That's what I was getting at, Commissioner Sellers.
We have Daniel Friesen in the off, in the room this morning, who is potentially a new county commissioner effective January of 2021. Daniel, do you have anything to comment on regarding this letter?
Thanks for coming.
Thank you, Commissioners, Daniel Friesen, Idea Tech, Golar, Kansas. Because of, of some of the impending conflicts, I probably limit my, my comments and allow our staff to continue to work with, with the commission and, and staff, but do appreciate this reference letter of, of support. We certainly, at Idea Tech, understand there are a lot of areas in Reno County that still need better broadband access and the COVID-19 pandemic has really shined a light on areas of desperate need across the United States and including Reno County. So appreciate the comments on our request and we're going to do what we can to get adequate and fast broadband to the entire county. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Daniel.
I know, I personally.
I understand your concern for conflicts, but I really don't believe you have conflicts representing your company until
Yeah.
you take office, if you do next year.
And I'm happy to answer any questions.
But understand your caution.
I'm, I'm working that way to.
Certainly.
Yeah, appreciate it, thank you.
I would second what Commissioner Sellers said, so.
Okay, is there any more discussion on this item?
I'm all in favor because I know I have a friend that has, has had to work at home, lives in a small rural town, and her request the other day came over the internet that, you know, anybody who will provide solid ability for me to work at home rather than my hit and miss type thing, so.
Okay, please call the roll.
Commissioner Hurst?
Yes.
Mr. Sellers?
Yes. And we'll direct this letter to be sent to the Spark Task Force on behalf of the three county commissioners. Okay, I believe that's all of our business items. We would like to move to the county administrator report for today, please.
Okay. I have a couple of items I wanted to discuss with you. Last week, the county commission received a letter from New Beginnings in regards to the $50,000 request to assist with the, I guess, renovation of Meadowlark Commons at 100 East Second Street to become a detox treatment facility. I believe they brought this to you either end of last year, beginning of this year. It was then mentioned, I believe the commissioners wanted to wait till budget time. A line item was put in the budget for New Beginnings and then moved from a New Beginnings line item to another line item. So there's adequate money for the 2021 budget, but it's not earmarked for New Beginnings or a detox facility. It's just in the reserves, kind of a miscellaneous category, but.
What are they asking for in the letter addressed to us now?
They really just wanted to bring up to date that progress to date for construction includes signed contracts with the architect and the general contractor, drawings and specs are being finalized, their projections are that they will be able to begin construction with, in a couple of months. Their comment was they are within $50,000 of reaching their goal of $500,000 if the county provides 500, or $50,000. So their fundraising team is working to close the gap. They just wanted to indicate that during this time of considerable stress due to the COVID-19 virus and the uncertainty of the economy, relapses from addiction have continued to rise, the lack of means to treat addiction impacts the entire community and individual and family members' lives. This makes us all more determined to begin and conclude this project in a timely manner. They don't have a specific request, I think it was more of kind of a, don't forget about the initial request of 50,000. So I wanted to bring it to your attention that this letter came to, to the office here, addressed to the commission, wanted you guys to know about it and then see if you wanted to give me any direction of where to go with this, if anywhere.
Well, maybe Commissioner Hurst will refresh my memory or I might have to go back to minutes of that meeting, but I, I believe that there was some discussion by the commission that we wanted to either have some discussion or put some caveats on that money, that it was not, that we weren't totally in the game at that point. We felt like that there was a need for this detox center, but we wanted additional information and how that center might go in the future.
I think you're absolutely right.
I think we need to go back to the minutes of the, the meeting of that request to refresh us commissioners and tell New Beginnings that if, if they're wanting us to allocate that 50,000, we need to have them discuss with you the concerns that we had during that meeting.
Yes, I, I want to caution fellow commissioners about putting money into a building, a project. Four years ago, I, I listened to the previous commission talk about putting some money into a project that had economic development positives, but they chose not to. And as I've learned a lot more since becoming commissioner, I, I agree with their stance that, that we should not be putting county money into something that we don't own or have control over. I think there's other avenues that may come up through the Health Department and through stepping up and through some other programs that are much better suited. And quite frankly, in my opinion, probably not legally, but I look at it, that we shouldn't be investing in property and we should be looking at how we can further a detox ability to function rather than putting that money into the property which we don't have control over with or know the future of. And so I, that's my opinion. I, I would like to, I would like to look at it at a little different avenue.
Well, again, I, I think from my memory, you shared some of those remarks at the time that we were considering this and since, since they weren't ready to request the money, we did put it on the back burner. I think we did the right thing on the budget this year of putting that allegation into the general fund. And so I think at this point in time, if they're getting closer to proceeding, we need to have them get with county administrator on those concerns. I, I don't want to speak for Commissioner Bush, but I think he had some favorability to this project. I also, but I do agree with some of Commissioner Hurst's remarks that if we could have our money used for other parts than the, quote, the building itself might be advantageous.
Services that are needed to keep it operating.
I think his point about investing in the building part makes some degree of sense. It's not saying that I wouldn't vote for it, but if we can work with them since our monies might be. might be used in a different way, might make better sense to at least Commissioner.
We need to know a lot more.
Yeah.
Okay. I'll get with Ms. Gonzalez, the president and CEO, and talk to her about kind of what their business plan looks like, what their timeline, and get back with you guys on that. Another item is that an email was sent to the commissioners a couple of weeks ago by Mike Garrett, the CEO of Horizon's Mental Health, about a board member, Nick Baldetti, the former health director, is on the board, is one of four members of Reno County's on the board, and it was asked if you wanted to keep him on the board. That term is started January 2020 and goes, ends in January 2023. So it's a three-year term. And I wanted to bring it up in a meeting to see if you wanted to get names, if you wanted to do something different, if you wanted to have Chairman Sellers as maybe the interim until a new health director's appointed, or what direction you guys wanted to go with this. Or leave Nick on, on the board. That's also an option.
Well, was it not, Mr. Purnington, the consensus of the commissioners that you took to individually, that this actual position on the board is a Reno County position, and the fact that we probably ought to have a Reno County representative in that position? I think that was what I heard you report.
In my conversations with individual commissioners, that was my perception of what they told me was it'd be good to have someone new that represented Reno County.
As the county administrator reviewed this with me, I guess my thought is just a suggestion, and this is not any more than a suggestion, that I would be willing or would suggest, excuse me, I would suggest one of our Reno County commissioners be an interim board member until we appoint a new Reno County Health Department Director.
I think Commissioner Sellers would be a very fine interim.
Okay. If you don't have any problem with that direction, it seems like to me that our Reno County Health Director ought to be on that board. And so if I could be an interim until that point in time, so.
And that could be worked out between the co, yeah, until, you bet.
So Randy, would you advise-
Mr. Garrett, yes.
Mr. Garrett of our thought there?
Yes, I will.
Other items?
Okay. The CARES Act money for the, to the Spark Committee, the 12.6 million, that application that you guys approved last week, we were refining the numbers internally. The numbers didn't change, the total, just the internal numbers and descriptions and narratives. Leslie worked on that all last week during the weekend, and that was sent off about, I think, 1:30 yesterday afternoon. 5:00 PM was the deadline. We've got confirmation emails back during, since then, that they did receive those. Those are good to go. And I've put a copy, a new revised copy of the summary in front of your chairs, just so you could kind of see what agencies, their actual, their numbers, which is what you approved. And it does show the Reno County program that's for the nonprofits and private schools of $1,089,498.54, which is what you approved last week. That's the number, that's the amount that a group will be working on. In discussions with Gary and John during last week and over the weekend, Gary sent me an update that they had a conversation with the Community Foundation, and then Deborah, Aubrey, and Lisa from the Chamber, the Foundation and United Way, about their help and, I guess, administering to some degree, helping with this grant process and being on the committee that would help make recommendations that would then come back to the full county commission for approval. So I had put, I told Gary and John that, I think that was a good list, along with Commissioner Bush, talked with him at the end of last week, and he was willing to be a part of this committee via phone to make recommendations prior to the full county commission looking at this. The Community Foundation has, already has an online grant application. They have software and a process that they've used for other grants and applications recently. So we're looking at using what they have, putting it on their site, probably on a link to the county site for nonprofits to begin applying for this money in early September. The plan right now is September 1st would be when this goes on, on the Community Foundation's website, but not, so that nonprofits can look at the process, but then start applying on September 8th. And then applications would be accepted through September and then brought back in early October for the county commission to make decisions on. That'd be the first phase of the money, to see how much of it gets used and how much we have left.
So our decision would be sometime in October?
October, yes. And I would be giving you updates that-
I guess I don't have any problem with that process as described, as long as we make it clear, at least in my opinion, that any nonprofit or these private schools that we've been discussing, if they feel like their allocation is not appropriate via this committee, that they have the right to come direct to the county commission and state their case. I feel like that-
That's what the law requires.
I'm sorry?
That's what the law requires.
Right, because it's all transparent, and you guys are the decision makers.
You see, my point is I readily accept the committee that you're suggesting. I think they'll do a good job and so forth, but if no, any of the group that pertains to this feels like that they haven't been given a fair allocation, I think that they should come to us before our decision is made.
And according to county councilor, that's required.
Yes.
The ability to do that.
Yes, the decision, in this particular case, the recommendation is yours, and the determinations have to be made in an open public meeting, and of course, your process lends itself to exactly what you proposed.
Well, I guess the distinction I'm trying to make, Joe, is that if someone felt like their allocation of this total was not provided the way they feel that they should be, is that I would want them to encourage that, to make it known to us. You're saying legally they can, but I think that it's appropriate that they understand that we want to hear from somebody that does not feel like this allocation process was appropriate. The first allocation of the $12 million, I think, was agreed upon by the parties, and so that we didn't have any dissent there.
Yes, and for the $1 million or the applications, it may not be a problem if, if all of the applications are less than a million dollars, as long as their requests are qualified expenses. So that's the part that this committee will help with, but that'll be up to you guys to look at, but I don't see it being much of a problem unless there's $2 million in requests, and then, of course, you guys will have to make a lot of hard decisions on that one.
Okay, so none of this money is what's called income not received?
Revenue loss, yes.
Revenue loss.
This, for nonprofits, this revenue loss does qualify, so it could be-
To me, there, to me, makes it difficult for the committee to decide what portion of that million dollars goes to which nonprofit.
Right, and most likely, they'll just bring the information to me, and then to you guys, here's the information, what direction do you want to go, and what decision? So-
We'll probably have the same thing we did before with the, with the schools and cities. We'll do the same thing with the nonprofits and the private schools, correct?
Yes.
Okay. But to me, the distinction is that this money could include revenue loss, which that first money did not include any revenue losses.
As to certain applicants, as to certain applicants.
Right, and then it's trying to figure out how much revenue loss was related to COVID.
Thank you. Other items?
Yes. The last item I have is just for some clarification. The office has received, or indications that there's going to be an agenda item request for next week to put in place a new resolution that removes, or less stringent to the governor's order. So reinstates Resolution 2020-17 on July 2nd, that did not, that took away the mandatory use of mask. So I wanted to find out if the commission wants this on the agenda, has any intention of a resolution that the county councilor needs to have prepared for next week as an agenda item, or if you'd rather just leave it as public comments versus an agenda item for discussion.
I feel that myself and Commissioner Bush made it very clear today that neither one of us are of the opinion that we should change this resolution at this point in time, and I see no use for it being an agenda item.
I have returned emails with the fact that so far, all of our decisions have been based on data-driven, and I want to see at least a week or two more of data. And at that point in time, if it does show that we have not reduced the incidences, then I would be in favor of bringing this up again. But I want to see enough trend that shows that it hasn't made a difference. So in that respect, Commissioner Sellers, I would agree with you.
Yeah, I think that's the direction, then.
Okay, so, so, yes, if they have a request, I'll just let them know that it won't be an agenda item, but they can come here for public comments.
As they've done this morning and other days, there's a public comment for anybody that wants to make on items not on the agenda, and I think that's the way we'll handle that until we, the commission itself puts an agenda item on, per se.
And two weeks, to me, doesn't make a trend yet.
You know, I would continue the fact that, in my opinion, our medical people within the community are directing me and influencing me that masks do make a difference. You heard Dr. Polly's comments this morning. I respect Dr. Polly's comments, so. Other items from the county-
I do not have any.
Administrator? I have none. You have none? The only request that I would have from our county administrator, do you have any kind of update or knowledge of what's been going on in this program that we approved for some marketing monies?
Yes, they've come up with a couple of strategies that they're still working on. There's nothing out there yet, but they have strategies. One of them is to hit radio, working with Eagle Communications, radio spots, and getting local medical people and local, I guess, advocates for the use of mask and to be on videos, and to really stress that this isn't, this is about public safety and not about government requirements. So there's a couple of strategies that, that they're working on. They do not have anything published yet. I've asked for reports. I sent that last week, so I don't have any yet.
Okay, and could you also give us an update? I know you have a request out for applicants for, I'm not sure of the job title, I'll call it communications director, what are you calling it?
Communication specialist.
Communication specialist. When will you start interviewing for that position?
So we have some really good applicants, and we will begin the telephone interview phase next week, and then probably, depending on schedules, if we start with, I think, five or six interviews on telephone next week. If at that point, the panel can narrow it down to three or four, or maybe five, brought in live, we'll check schedules and either do it probably the week after Labor Day. So early September, hoping to have someone on board by early October.
Have you directed a panel yet?
So we have multiple panels that Renee and I are working on. So there's different parts of them, so we are still trying to contact everyone to get those set up.
And that would be different groups within the county departments?
Different groups within, yes, we may have some community partners that we ask to sit on some things. We're going to do, for example, there's going to be an in-basket that'll just be the candidates themselves working with IT and HR. There'll be an interview with myself, there'll be an interview with directors, probably an interview panel with peers in similar type of jobs, and then we will ask them to do a presentation. So we'll give them a topic, give a presentation, 10, 15 minutes, and answer questions. I think we'd like a press conference.
When you have that process totally thought through and organized, I think the commissioners would like to have a memo on that. Sounds like that your suggestion is appropriate, and I'm glad it's as comprehensive as you're suggesting, but I think it's an important position. Noticed just the other day, a community, small community, a valley center has this position in their next year's budget. It's, it appears to me that it's something that governmental agencies are going to have to do to make it more known to the constituents exactly what's happening within their various realm.
If I may make a comment here, regarding the marketing program that we signed off on, I want to stress one thing, that I think this should be informational-based only. I don't want to see any scare tactics. I want to see it informational only, and there's no need. I agreed with Commissioner Sellers that we hear about it all the time, it's on everything we can imagine, and that I just want to see this as informational only.
Okay, I'll get that to them.
If that's satisfactory with you.
And again, I think the reason I supported this allocation of money is as much for the future as for this particular phase that we're in at this point in time, to set up the systems that our new hire, this communications specialist can be using on our behalf. I think, in my opinion, that's as important in the next three or four months of getting those set up as what we do with the COVID document.
And I think the new director, new specialist will bring in a lot of new items also.
Okay, if there's no other items, we'll join the meeting, and then is this a public meeting, 11 o'clock, the road viewing?
Yes.
Okay, we are, Joe, would you explain that to the public, what we're doing at 11 o'clock, please? Address the podium and-
The process of opening or vacating a road is controlled by Kansas statute. Part of that process is, after you have received a petition, in this case, to vacate a road, you are required to appoint three viewers to go out and view the road, and to consult with anybody who appears at that time with, who has a point of view with respect to the proposed road vacation. You're entitled, you can appoint three disinterested householders, or you can appoint yourself. We, over the years, county commissioners have appointed themselves. There has to be a public hearing on the proposed road vacation. Reno County has always thought it difficult to conduct a public hearing to- Reno County has always thought it difficult to conduct a public hearing, depending on how controversial the pros, the proposal might be, or the number of people out there, outside, in the wind, or the heat, or the cold, or whatever it is. So we have a, kind of a bifurcated process, where we have the road viewing, and sometimes there are people who will show up, but it's an opportunity for you to see the physical site and to understand what's being proposed. One week later, we conduct a public hearing here where we have the facilities to accommodate anybody who'd like to appear and be heard on the subject, and it's following that public hearing that you would make a decision.
And the viewing today consists of a road that presently divides the solid waste facility, and we're thinking about doing away with that road between-
It's a half-mile road that extends south from where Mohawk intersects with Clark Road, and on the west side of that road is the present landfill operation, the majority of it. On the east side is another quarter section that the county owns. We have some minimal facilities over there having to do with the gas mitigation project and a parking lot, but, but the main interest in the road vacation is the new facilities that are going to be constructed over there as part of the long-term project, and the moving of copious amounts of topsoil from the east side to the west side across what is now Mohawk Road to provide cover at the landfill site.
Okay, thank you for that explanation. Anyone that wants to show up that's interested in that, that viewing will be at 11 o'clock this morning at the site.
At that site, we'll meet specifically right there at the entryway to the facility, to the public waste facility.
I think so, right there at the intersection of Clark and Mohawk, that I, that would be the most convenient, appropriate place, although I haven't heard anybody say that, I just assume that'd be the case.
Okay, if there's no other items, I declare this meeting adjourned. Thank you.